Good evening, Bridgeport. Thanks for coming out. It's a full house, not usual, so we appreciate you coming and spending your Tuesday evening with us. It is 7:44. This is our Tuesday, May 28 meeting. We are called to order. If everyone would please rise and pledge a flag with me. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Laura Houck.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Kyle Schenk.
Here.
Amy Hei.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Sabat Alzaid.
Alzaid. I'm here, thank you.
Madam President, I note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately 6:45 to approximately 7:43 with regard to personnel issues, litigation, and real estate.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Excuse me. First up for council consideration, approval of the April 23, 2024, meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Schenk, a second for Ms. Diane Gundrum. Do we have any questions or comments from council of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have the presentation of the 2024 Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship Award to Ms. Rafia Malloy. I am happy to say that it was a great crop, as always, of worthy candidates that the Morales Scholarship Committee had to select from. But ultimately, Ms. Malloy shone above and beyond the competition. Rafia will be graduating in a couple weeks, I guess, from Upper Marion High School, and will be going on to North Carolina A&amp;T University this fall, where she will be majoring in nursing. She had a great GPA, exhibited great scholastic acumen while she was at Upper... Excuse me, at Upper Marion, and additionally was part of the Black Student Union and the cheerleading team while at Upper Marion. So Vice President Heil, I believe, is going to present Ms. Malloy with her check and award. Hopefully, we can get a photograph as well, and please join us in congratulating Ms. Rafia Malloy.
Are you the parents? Why don't you stand up here? I'm the boss. Wait till Pete gets up there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're all really proud of you. And we have quite a packed agenda. It is a lot of fun today, but you certainly don't need to stick around if you have other things to do. If you'd like to, then you're welcome to. To you. Congratulations.
I just want to add, since I didn't get it... Ms. Malloy is going into nursing, too, so she's giving back to her community with her college degree. So that's another great thing, the reason we chose her.
All right. Moving on to a presentation of the Bridgeport Business Association's Good Citizen Award to Mr. Pete Hand. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Ray Abdallah and Ms. Lauren Brennan to perform the presentation, as well as Wendy McLahan from Bridgeport Veterinary Hospital. Excuse me.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing the BBA the opportunity to once again present the Good Citizenship Award to a very deserving person. Tonight with me, I have Dr. Lauren Brennan from Phoenix Physical Therapy and Ms. Wendy McLahan from the Bridgeport Veterinary Hospital. The Good Citizenship Award is given to business owners and/or residents that may or may not live in the borough of Bridgeport. The Good Citizenship Award acknowledges a person who goes above and beyond in their service and generosity to others in their community. The BBA is very pleased tonight to present the Good Citizenship Award to Mr. Pete Hand. Pete has spent a lifetime of service and commitment to the community. Pete is always generous with his time, talents, when a fellow citizen is in need. Pete has a history of donating his time and efforts to events and holidays honoring veterans and first responders. Pete is involved with many community organizations that are always trying to aid and benefit the community. Pete is a very active member and leader in his beloved AOH. It is because of these reasons and others that the BBA is truly honored to acknowledge Pete tonight and to thank him publicly. Thank you, Pete. And thank you, Pete, and please come on up, and Dr. Lauren Brennan will present you the 2024 Good Citizenship Award.
Doctor, we have opportunity to object?
Are you looking at me, Ray?
I am, I think. Thank you, Angela. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, buddy.
Is there anything we can do to help you bring back the muscle ball? I don't know that we have the toolkit for that.
Well, thank you for everything.
Didn't that make you sick? That was the other time I ate too many oysters.
Didn't he win? He won. Yeah, he won. He won! He won!
Look, I wouldn't ask you to bring something back if I didn't think I could win it.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming out, and thank you to the BBA for this wonderful initiative. I think it's really impactful and excited to see who you announce for next month. Again, you certainly are welcome to stay, and we love seeing our residents here, but if you'd like to leave, you're also welcome to do so.
Bye, guys.
Dr. Abdallah, number one fan. We appreciate you.
All right. Next up for council consideration, we have a sketch plan presentation. The address in question in the applicant is 101 East Fourth Street, Mr. Luigi Mazatelli. Mr. Mazatelli, along with his engineer, are coming forward as we speak. So with that, I will turn it over to Scott.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Thank you for taking some time to listen to our presentation tonight. My name is Scott Mill. I'm actually a landscape architect with Van Cleef Engineering Associates. As you mentioned, Luigi Mazatelli is also with me. He's the owner of the property and the applicant. And we are here to present a sketch plan. So being as such, we're not here for any sort of formal vote or formal recommendation or anything like that from council here for feedback, comments. If you have any questions, hopefully, one of us will be able to answer. And then from there, we'll be able to determine how best to move forward with the project. So...
I'm sorry. Scott, I was under the impression that you were going to have a thumb drive or poster boards for visual aids?
I emailed them to...
When was this?
Last week.
Okay. Is this what you emailed to Steve?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have those? I do have boards in my car as a backup.
Do I do have those. I just... I'm sorry. The email... I'm sorry. Apologies for miscommunication, but the email had said I'll have... I'll be bringing visual aids and a presentation with me. I thought those were just for Steve's edification, so...
I'm sorry if that was...
No, that's okay. Give me... Give your presentation. I will have them prepared in just a couple minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
So the property is located at the easterly corner of the intersection of Ford and East Fourth Street. It's kind of a triangular intersection. The property itself is triangular in shape. It houses or sits on the land is Dino's Pizza and Pasta. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the restaurant that Mr. Mazatelli has owned for 21 years now, I believe. So he's been there quite a long time. The property is in the NC Neighborhood Commercial District, and it has, as I mentioned, a restaurant. It also has apartments above. There are a total of six apartments. Both uses are permitted uses in the NC District. The land is about 9,400 square feet in area. Most of the building itself fronts on Ford Street. A portion also, about half of the frontage on East Fourth Street, fronts on that as well. And Mr. Mazatelli would like to construct an addition to his property. The restaurant business is going well for him. He'd like to add on to it, offer other experiences, including a bar, outdoor seating. He'd also like to add two-bedroom apartments above. So that's what we're here tonight to discuss, is his proposal to do those additions. Those additions would be seen along Fourth Street. You really wouldn't see them from Ford, being that the building extends entirely along the Ford Street frontage, as I mentioned. So it would all be presented and seen along East Fourth Street. We submitted the sketch plan about two months ago, received a review letter from Mr. Phillips. In his letter, mostly discusses variances that would be requested. And if you'd like, we can kind of go through that letter, discuss any of those variances and other comments that are in there. But one of the main things with the project is parking. As I'm sure a lot of projects in the borough, there are some concerns about parking. The ordinance allows for any existing use and structure to kind of be grandfathered where it is, as it exists, to not have to provide additional parking for what's existing today. You have to provide it for what's being added on. So for Mr. Mazatelli, it's the two-bedroom apartments, as well as the... It's about 1,800 square feet of indoor restaurant area, plus outdoor seating for 32 patrons. How are we looking with? Okay. In total, there'd be 94 seats added inside. I think I had a typo on my plan that said 78, but there's 94. And as I mentioned, there'd be 32 additional seats for outdoor seating. Going through Mr. Phillips's letter...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. So the 94, did I include the 32, or is it 126 total?
126 total, yes. Going through Mr. Phillips's letter, it's dated April 26, 2024. Comment under zoning, number one, talks about the average square foot required per dwelling unit. Existing apartments, there are six. To add two, there'd be eight. The requirement then would be for a lot area of 14,400 square feet. The property is at 9,382 square feet. So a variance would be requested for that shortfall in the square footage. The second one noted requirement for a rear yard of 10 feet. This is not only the main structure or building, but also there will be a freestanding wall at the end of the outdoor seating area, and that encroaches into that 10-foot setback, so a variance would be needed for that. We have it at about eight feet, as far as a setback goes for that wall. Comment three, the actual building height must be provided. We'll provide that on future plans. The maximum permitted in this district is six stories or 72 feet. This project will be way short of that, only proposing three stories. Existing is only three stories, and proposed will also only be at a maximum three stories, and probably in the 35 to 36-foot height range, so well short of the six-story, 72-foot maximum. Comment number four deals with parking. That each proposed dwelling requires two off-street parking spaces. So for the two dwellings total, before parking spaces. Mr. Mazatelli and I kind of walked the property and looked at different areas where he could possibly convert or make work for the parking, and there just isn't any room. He reached out to neighbors adjacent to him and tried to work with them and tried to get parking, and still it doesn't really work out. So what is going to be proposed? And Mr. Mazatelli has already reached out to a nearby property owner to lease four parking spaces from him. And that property is, if you're looking at the site, to the north of the railroad tracks and to the east. So there's a little kind of construction yard where I believe the owner leases out to contractors and things like that that normally store vehicles in that area. So he would lease four spaces in that location.
So you don't mind me interrupting, do you?
Not at all.
Okay. No, I appreciate... And so Mr. Bello or Mr. Truman, when it comes to leasing, what is our legal formal requirement? Because we don't want it to just be a... If that's okay by us, which I don't know, we can't just let that be a nice little side gesture that doesn't have formality to it.
The applicant can request off-site parking, and as long as it's secured by a lease and he gets the approvals that he needs, that's perfectly fine.
So do we, like, validate that or... Like, do we approve that lease, or is it just like...
Yeah, the applicant would present it to council. It would have to meet my satisfaction.
That's fine. That's all I wanted to know.
And to add to that, it's a zoning requirement that the parking be on the site, so it would also need zoning relief.
Is there a duration for this contract? Like, would they be... Would they have to secure a 20-year contract for the parking? For it to be something that was meaningful? Because it doesn't really make sense if it was just a year or so and then it disappears.
Yeah, usually you want to get some extended term, but the argument goes, if he doesn't have the parking, then the units aren't permitted.
And he's, at this point, kind of more of a handshake deal just because of the early nature of this project that, you know, once it gets, hopefully, some favorable feedback, that if the project does move forward, obviously, he'll move forward with a more formal arrangement and a formal lease that would meet the satisfaction of your solicitor to, you know, to have that or to secure that parking.
And that parking is pretty much available now. It's just not used. So it's... That understanding, like, it wouldn't make sense to say, oh, we're leasing these four parking spaces, but they're often used by other people?
Correct. Yeah, they would be, you know, marked, signed, somehow designated for just those tenants of the apartments.
How far away are these parking spots from the unit?
They are... I wrote it down. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was about 150 to 180 feet away. So 50 yards, half the distance of a football field, give or take.
And it goes without saying, I'm sorry. It goes without saying that the parking spaces would be built to the borough standard.
Correct, in size and... I believe the area is in stone right now.
Yeah, that would not be acceptable. It would have to be McAdam parking spaces to the engineer's satisfaction.
Correct. And it may or may not be more than four, depending on the additional calculation of the restaurant that we just heard the numbers tonight for the first time.
We haven't touched on that, and I have a lot of questions about parking for all those additional seats.
Right. And that brings us to the next comment in Mr. Phillips's letter, talking about the additional parking required for the restaurant. There is a provision in your ordinance that allows for an exception if you're within a certain geographic area. The way I have it structured or written out on my plan, I wasn't exactly sure the interpretation on that because it talks about along Fourth Street from the Calbe to Ford. So the property it joins or is fronts on Ford, so I didn't know if that meant the center line of Ford is the limit or if its property is also fronting on Ford. Or exactly how that determination is made, how that interpretation is. Not sure if it applies to us or not. In the case that it doesn't, or that this property doesn't qualify, then we would be seeking a variance, and then there's a provision in that for a fee in lieu of for parking.
Exactly, and that's what I noted in my letter, that it would require a variance because my interpretation of that is, it says between the Calbe and Ford, not fronting the Calbe and Ford, so...
So that's what our, you know, desire would be for that, would be to provide a fee in lieu of for the parking.
So how many spaces are you saying are required for the addition to the bar area and outside seating?
So there are two separate calculations. In the parking requirements of your zoning ordinance, the requirement is one space for every four seats or one space for 50 square feet of area accessible where you don't provide any seating. So in our case, we're providing seats. So it'd be the one space for every four... One space for every four seats, which the 94 seats would be required, which equates to 24 spaces would be required for that. Then for the additional employees, there's five additional employees. One space for every 1.2 employees, which adds another four spaces for that. And then under your accessory use requirements, and then under there is for outdoor restaurant seating, it's kind of a scaled requirement. For the first 12 seats, no parking is required. And then from 13 to 24, it's one space for every six seats. And then above 25, or 25 and above, it's one space for every four seats. So breaking that down ends up requiring another six spaces. And if I did my math right, that's a total of 32 spaces that the property would be short.
I did math in my head, which is dangerous, but I thought it was more than that.
So it's the 24 for the restaurant expansion.
You got 32?
Yeah, you said 32.
Yeah, I had 24 for the seats, the indoor seats. Four for the employees, so that's 28.
And six.
Sorry?
And six more. That's 34.
Two, well, based on the graduated outdoor seating, it's two for the second 12 and then two for the last.
You're saying it's four, not six?
12.
No, you said six, okay.
Did I say six?
He did say six.
Six combined, four plus two.
The gazenters are catching up on me.
So yeah, for the outdoor seating, it's six total, four and two in the separate categories. That's... But Mr. Phillips, I'm sure, you know, we can, you know, he'll... I'll present him with the data, let him confirm and, you know, agree, or, you know, we'll come up with the correct number. But that's what I came up with, was 32 spaces.
Now, I think it's a... The graphics that I've seen and what you want to do and knowing the reputation of the place, I mean, it's a wonderful place and beloved here in Bridgeport. But I do struggle on some level to understand where 34 more cars are going to go, 32 more cars are going to go. And so I do have a little bit of concern about that. And you're saying you would just pay 2,000 per space in lieu of parking?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're proposing in this day and age with DoorDash and Uber Eats, just Uber in general. You know, you've got a lot of opportunities for ride sharing, things like that, that before COVID weren't around, that, you know, offer opportunities for people to get around without needing parking spaces.
How many...
I was going to say, but I'm pretty lenient on parking, honestly. But if you're saying Uber dash and things, then you don't need extra seats because you're saying that the people who are coming here don't... Okay. I just... Or like, well, dash, so it just like sounds like a funny reasoning to me, just, well, people are picking up pizzas.
Just in general, ride sharing and things of that nature, providing opportunities that you may not have otherwise, that, you know, you don't need, I don't think, as much parking as you did pre-COVID era.
I do agree, you don't need as much as before then, but that just kind of took me off guard because, like, well, Uber Eats, you're not really picking it up there.
True, right. You're not sitting down and eating at that point.
How many spaces do you have on site presently?
Presently, zero. There is parking. You can see the site there. Ford Street kind of goes up at an angle. Fourth Street, down at the bottom of the page, the property outlined in yellow. And most of the building, you can kind of see in white. Fronts along Ford Street with a portion of it fronting along Fourth. Within light gray, you can see the proposed building addition. But you can see along Ford Street, you know, several cars in the street parking. They park perpendicularly in that area. But there isn't any parking available. There are a couple of garage spaces within the portion of the building on the right side along Ford, but actual open-to-the-air parking for public use, there aren't any.
And I didn't... Excuse me. I didn't mention this in my review letter because it's a little premature, but I would also be looking for a dedicated loading zone along Fourth Street, right there, in front of whatever would be the main entrance so that we don't have cars double parked picking their pizzas up.
And how many spaces would that compromise?
Probably three, I would think, to safely get in and out, at least.
So you're going to lose three. And then, I'm not here to create problems, gentlemen. I'm just here to identify issues, and then we can talk through them. But that parking is technically illegal over there. So if that were made... I mean, I would... You're going to argue it was grandfathered in, and I respect that argument. But there is no parking like that in Bridgeport anymore. There was for years, and it's not permissible any longer. So if that's the case, you're going to lose 70% of that?
I'm kind of curious. I love outdoor seating, and I love the idea, but is there a parking that you could put there? And how many spaces would possibly fit into that space?
That outdoor seating area is 22 feet wide. So while you could put parking there, it would be difficult to get in and out because you wouldn't have the aisle width to get to it.
It would... Yeah, I could add to that. It would be very difficult. And I don't know that PennDOT would allow that with a parking entrance that close to the intersection.
Does PennDOT allow loading zones on Staver?
It would have to be permitted, but I would think so in this case because it's just removing on-street parking.
How long do you think the project would take to get done? Because one of the things, we are looking at the hope of adding some public parking. That's our goal. We've been looking at it in planning meetings with the county. And my hope is that when we have more public parking, that alleviates parking burden on others. And honestly, like, if Dino's was five feet away from Dr. Ray's property, this would probably all be fine because he would just tell everyone to park there, and he would be giving away coupons. But so, just to give an idea of how we would perceive, like, oh, we might be able to get public parking between now and X, do you have an idea of the timeline of the project? Like, is it a year, two years?
I would hope within a year. We would have to go to zoning hearing, hopefully get our variances. Hopefully, we don't have to go through an appeal process if somebody takes party status type of... Because obviously, that adds time. You know, but by and large, you know, with it not being a large site, not being, from a grading standpoint, stormwater management standpoint, I don't think it's that difficult of a project to get through the approval process once everybody's kind of on board, once we get the variances. So hopefully, that would go pretty quick, and hopefully, in a year's time, have... have all the, at least preliminary approval.
A year to get approval of everything, and then, then there's more time.
And then you've got to go through building code and all that to get your, you know, building permit and all that.
Because in theory, putting together a parking lot is a lot easier than building a burger pizza place.
Not just in theory, but in reality, yes. Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, the building codes are certainly more, you know, sophisticated than, than the engineering.
To Mr., to Mr. Bellows' point about the, the spots on Ford Street that are perpendicular there, you know, the argument will be that some of those are grandfathered in. But if we take the commercial aspect out of this and just look at the residential, you're proposing adding two residential units and there are existing six, is that right?
Correct.
What would be, under our current code, the total number of spots needed for those eight units?
It would be two for each, so 16.
It would be 16? I mean, the council's conversation, now I speak for what I hear from everybody, is that we really want to make an effort to park the residential stuff. And then the commercial stuff, like Mr. Heil said, we, you will look for municipal parking where we can. Then there's a conversation there to be had, but, you know, getting the residential units parked really seems to be everybody's priority. You know, obviously, the argument is that some of that's grandfathered in, but if we can park, park all of those residential units, that certainly makes me feel better about the situation.
Okay, and I can, I can talk to Mr. Mazatelli after the meeting.
I don't, I don't want to speak for Roger or Mr. Bellows or anybody else, but that's the way I view it.
Are you suggesting designated spaces for each, each apartment owner?
Yeah, I'm suggesting getting, yeah, getting all of the residential there parked and off of the, the books of where is everybody gonna park? All, all of the residential on the site. And then as far as the business, you know, then, then that conversation can be had. That's at least the way I look at it.
And I, like I said, I can talk to Mr. Mazatelli after the meeting, see if he can reach out to the property owner that he's currently got that handshake deal with and see if there's an opportunity to lease additional spaces.
Does that, Mr. Bellows, does that make sense? And then Saba and Keith and Roger, kind of that line of thought?
I understand what you're trying to accomplish, yeah. The, I would ask, and again, I'm just the attorney here, I don't have a vote nor do I want one. But I was, sometimes when people come in with a high-density plan, they have a fallback position. Do you have a fallback position this evening that, you know, hey, that maybe in my perfect world, I'd get all these extra seats and I'd get these extra apartments? But I understand that's a pretty aggressive ask. And, you know, but I can live with X.
Yeah, I don't know that, I'm at a position to discuss anything. I haven't really had those discussions with Mr. Mazatelli. He may have something in the back of his mind that maybe we want to talk about after tonight and come in maybe with a different presentation, or he wants to think about some things before discussing in a public forum. But it's certainly something to think about.
Have you, have you thought at all about just doing the commercial piece and not doing the additional residential?
That might be a possibility.
Mr. Scott, I do want to say that, love Dino's there maybe too often. I love the sketch plans in general and the idea of kind of opening the outdoor seating. I think it's what we all envisioned for Bridgeport, a walkable space where everybody can have fun and enjoy their, their time and go out to dinner with their families. So I want to kind of start by saying that I appreciate even the thought in expanding your business and do, you know, I'm excited to see forward thinking in that area. One thing that comes to mind is, it seems like a pretty difficult spot. You can't really like build a parking lot on top of the building itself or something like that in order to get the 32 spaces. And there is a commitment financially, it seems, from you in the roughly $64,000, if I calculated that correctly, towards the parking spots. If you can't secure them to give us that amount of money. Now, just thinking creatively with you, assume the borough were to find a property where we could erect a parking garage that we all intend on doing. So one of our goals as a council is that we want to increase the amount of parking that we have in our downtown area so that we don't end up like a Manayunk or like a Contra Hocken that kind of built first then thought about parking later. We'd like to really do this sustainably, do this in a way that's responsible and allow growth of businesses that will stay and not close their doors because they can't park enough people, right? So assume that we do that. I think maybe just thinking about, you don't have to answer this now, but maybe thinking about what number that would be if you were to collaborate with us on some sort of purchasing of a property and building a parking lot that could help your business in parking, and then we can kind of forget about the building around your business, but maybe within a walkable distance, considering that's already something that we'd like to do. And if you, and I, I know that, you know, you're a business that gives back to the community and that cares about the progress in the community, and you're here for the long haul, right? So if that's the case, then I assume that there's some interest in helping us build as well together. So that's something that I'm thinking of. Obviously, I don't speak for all of council, but my thoughts are, let's, let's figure out how to collaborate and make this work for everybody, let's make it a win-win situation.
And just to clarify, it would be $80,000 and that's 64, it's 2,500 a spot.
Thanks, Roger.
That's a, I think, if I'm reading you right, I think that's a really good idea because we could create a fund basically to find a new parking lot that's reasonable. I think you have a ready-made audience now, that's part of the reason we got these new housing is because in theory, you have a lot of people who come there who don't need to drive. And I've talked to those residents and they said, one of the best things about living there is that they come to Dino's. So that's, that's a good thing. I think that it sounds, it sounds like the plan itself is pretty fine. I think that it would be nice if the facade was a little bit more livelier, so in terms of look.
Funny you say that. If, Mr. Truman could fast forward to, we've got a couple of artists renderings of possibly what the facade could look like. So that's Vantage Point, if you're standing on Fourth. Kind of straight on, and that's kind of at the angle of the corner. And you can see that the white fence there is kind of the ramp and steps leading to the outdoor seating area. You can see the three-story building closest, the portion of the building closest to us would be the two apartments above. Each floor, second and third floor would each have two, two, or a two-bedroom apartment for two total. And then you see the, between the three-story portion and the next two stories, it drops down to one story. Basically, that is the extent of the proposed addition. So from where it goes from two stories towards the corner, that's all the existing building there.
Yeah, I, when I looked at it, I could barely tell that it was Dino's. So I don't know the signage rules, but it just, it looks like, hey, here's a new building, also Dino's is here. Like, so that's something I actually would like to see more prominence to kind of see, tell what it is in the future. That's me, people may disagree, but I think being able to visually tell what it is is a, is a good thing because we like Dino's and that, how that looks is up to you. But you can even look at the little awnings there, and the, the signs on the awnings are just like little tiny signs.
Right, right. I'll have to talk to the architect about that.
I, I, I think Vice President Heil, I understand your sentiment. I think at this point, it's, it's an artist's rendering, but they're doing their best to try to operate within the confines of our sign ordinance. So. Couple of, couple of points of order I just wanted to interject on. So Scott had mentioned the, the spoken word or handshake agreement on the additional parking spaces and the location of those spaces in relation to Dino's. Where my cursor is in the top right-hand corner, that is where those parking spaces would be located, up there. So a relatively short jaunt back up to Dino's. And secondly, yes, these perpendicular spaces that are located on the, well, what was the dead end of Ford Street are grandfathered in or, for lack of a better term. But with the, with the advent of the riverfront development on the other side of the tracks here, this has become a major choke point. And when ultimately the Ford Street, as it is desperately in need of, gets resurfaced, all of these spaces are going to be restripped and converted into angled parking rather than perpendicular parking. The perpendicular parking is not conducive to, to two-way traffic going in and out of that development. So, and ultimately, I think that's going to result in a, an overall loss of some parking spaces going down that stretch of Ford. There are going, as, as a, and this is, you know, incidental to Mr. Mazatelli's application, but in conversations with the developer and, and meetings with both the developer and the PUC and Norfolk Southern, there are significant upgrades that are coming to both at-grade, or all three at-grade crossings, but in particular, this at-grade crossing of the train tracks insofar as providing more pedestrian safety because the, the, the safe and logical assumption is there are going to be a lot more, a significant amount of pedestrian foot traffic coming in and out of that development. So there are going to be some upgrades to the at-grade crossings of the train tracks in the borough coming sooner than later.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
Well, I don't like having to cross railroad tracks. I don't have to at my house, so that's not a me problem. But if people are buying the home, like, it's just got to be understood that that's what you're gonna have to do. And I assume you're gonna have to sell that to people, so that's a you problem, right?
And I, I would think that the people who are buying homes already at Riverpoint know that, you know, to come into town, they're gonna have to cross one of the railroad crossings already. So I think they're, they're well aware of that.
Well, yeah, but those, they don't have to live there and walk across. I mean, it's a different situation altogether than walking into your own home, right, so.
Right, do you know anything about that train? Sometimes it just sits there for a half hour, it doesn't move. Like, imagine having a whole car full of groceries and you can't even get to your apartment because the train's just kind of hanging out, because they have their own little schedule that they have to go on. So that's unfortunate.
Sure, if you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
I would like to say Dino's is a staple of the community. And Tony, I think everyone knows what Dino's is. Huh? Sorry, Michael Sobko, 723 Beach Court. Got ahead of myself, sorry.
Thank you, Michael.
S O B K O W.
Thank you.
Yep. I think everyone knows what Dino's is, they don't need the signage, right? But, but, one thing I'm struggling with is, we're talking about parking, but a year or two ago, there was no problem parking around Dino's. Now there is because there's housing there, right? And we're talking about the train because houses are back there, that's not his fault, right? So why should he be punished for that? Why should we be telling him he's got to buy parking spaces in this one? It wasn't a problem before.
No one's telling him, no one's being punished, number one.
Nope, sorry.
No one's telling me I should do that, but he's asking the council to allow him to expand his business, not maintain his business, expand his business, and that requires additional parking. That's triggering the conversation.
Understood, but when so many houses come, doesn't he have to expand? He has to, right? He can't manage that many houses next to his pizza place that's beloved.
Yeah, I think the additional, the additional complication, Mr. Sobko, Sobko, is that not only is the applicant looking to expand his business, which I think at least a handful of council members here have said, you know, if possible, we want to work with commercial expansions and, and development of the commercial corridor. And if, if possible, potentially look into providing relief for parking. The applicant is also looking to add additional apartments, additional residential dwellings there.
Two.
In addition to the pre-existing non-conformity that has zero parking as it currently stands. So I think that's a, a significant caveat.
Yeah, and, and the issue with residential parking as opposed, like, if it's just the business, that's fine. I don't think there's as much of an issue there. But when it comes to residential, you know, if you have your car there, it's there all day. So that takes up two, four, six, eight spots that then people can't use for the business and other businesses. So the issue's not the expansion, expansion's great. I am 100%, I think we most, pretty much all are, want this to succeed. Looking forward to the, the other variances and issues. It's really about making sure the other, the residential spots, because those will be stuck there, people will be home all day or all night. And so that, that impacts where people park when they want to go and eat at the restaurant.
And I think, just, just in case, we have folks here that, in the audience that are, that are not familiar with the, the land development process and the, the varying types of meetings that we have, tonight's meeting is a sketch plan meeting. It's, it's the least formal level of land development or zoning or real estate-related project review. There is no formal decision rendered by council tonight. Council makes no vote. It's simply an informal method for the applicant and his professionals to obtain feedback from the elected officials as to what they might like to see and what, what the applicant might expect, what, what challenges the applicant may have if they decide ultimately to make that even more significant financial expense of applying and submitting and going through zoning and land development. You know, nobody's telling Luigi they dislike the project or that, no, he's not permitted to do it. This is merely council providing some informal feedback for him to take back to the drawing board, sharpen the pencil up, see if there are any changes that could be made before he makes the leap into the much more time-consuming, labor-intensive and resource-intensive expenditure of land development application.
And I understand that, I just think some of the issues you're bringing up to him are more borough problems, not his problem, right? With parking and the train tracks and where the buildings are.
Yeah, I respectfully, I disagree with you. Yeah, the, he, he could do nothing and no one would question what he's doing. It's, it's, the only reason we're having the conversation is because of the expansion. And when you want to expand, then you got to follow the rules going forward. Historically, what's there, if he wants to maintain it the way it is, we have no say. He has the absolute right to do it and we're, we would say hurrah. He's saying, council, I'd like to expand this, and we're saying, we're willing to listen. But we have to talk about real issues that are, that are arisen as a result of this expansion. For example, if there is expansion, he's going to lose three spaces to a loading zone that he has now. So not only is it going to be a bigger place with more seating, it's going to have three less parking spaces right out of the gate. That I would not say, I would not use the word that we agree that it's grandfathered. There is a, there is parking that's perpendicular. And, you know, depending on the position the borough takes, that could be completely eliminated as a result of the expansion. So no one's saying that he can't do it, no one's saying that he shouldn't do it. What we are here to talk about, though, is what issues are triggered as a result of this application. And one thing that he's already acknowledged, or his professional has acknowledged, is that he needs zoning hearing board relief, which is a completely separate body than this, right? We, we can go and we can support his application, we can oppose his application, or we can do nothing. But we have no say other than that in what the zoning hearing board does. So even if this board embraces it, he might not get the, the relief he needs in front of the zoning hearing board. That's the process. And, and key, Mr. Truman is exactly right. This is about identifying the issues, talking about them and getting everybody thinking about them for the first time so that maybe we can come to some sort of accommodation or reasonable approach to this. It's not always, as an applicant, you come in and ask and the council says, okay, well, you get everything you've just asked for, right? Doesn't work that way. So, so no one's being, no one's saying no to him tonight or even in the future. What we're doing is asking the questions that are absolutely triggered as a matter, matter of engineering and as a matter of legal interpretations of the code. And council is bound by that code. Council can't just ignore the code, right? Because if it did that, well, I like Dino's, but, you know, this guy likes Fran's Owns, right? So let's give Fran's Owns a break and not give Dino's a break. And that's why you can't do those types of things. You have to treat everybody the same. And that person is applicant. It's not Dino's, it's not Fran's Owns, it's applicant.
And I get that, but Fran's Owns isn't on the border of all the new houses that are, are coming, right?
Michael, can I just say one more thing too?
Bridgeport Pizza.
This is.
Oh, Bridgeport, sorry.
So they're asking us for variance, they're asking us to, to, for a variance. They're not asking to say, hey, can we do this, and we're saying no. We said yes to everything within the law. What he's asking for is not within the law, right? So like, it's a variance, it's an exception to the law. So he's doing things that are not necessarily illegal, but like, not legal, right? Like, they're not a part of our code. So we have the right to say yes or no to something that's not legal within the code, and that's what we're doing right now. It's not everything. So if anything that he's done within the law, we can't say anything about. What we're discussing right now is things that are outside of the law, which is our jobs to do to maintain. So I just want to make sure that you understand that this is, what this specifically is.
And to add to that, those rules are there to protect the residents that are there already, right? Like, we also have to look out for all those residents on Fourth Street who are going to be parking. And if there's 100 people coming over to park at Dino's, they're not going to have any parking and we're going to have to answer to that. So it just, we have to consider more than just Dino's, unfortunately.
But is Dino's a bigger parking problem or the new? I would say that, but is Dino's a bigger parking problem or the new housing that's coming up? Like what's a bigger parking issue?
They had to follow the rules as well. They had to come and do the same process.
The new housing are parked in accordance with the ordinance.
Yeah, they had to meet the ordinance, just like everybody else.
So how many parking spaces do they have per unit?
They have, they have the amount prescribed by the code per unit and then some. There's actually overflow parking down by the river and there's overflow parking towards Dino's side, actually, right?
That doesn't help him.
Yeah, well, not, well, maybe it does. I don't know. I think it probably does help him.
Okay. Sorry. I don't know all the politics.
I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
One thing to keep in mind of these conversations is that the easy stuff we don't talk about because it's already easy and it's answered. So the conversations that we have are about the things that aren't easy, which why sometimes makes it seem where the conversation's adversarial, where it's not adversarial. It's just the only things that come up are the ones that require the extra conversation, you know?
Also, thank you for coming out to support local, local business.
Dana Thompson, 416 Coats. There are, it is 8:30 on a school night and we have five school kids. Can we move on to the park and not about parking? I was told we would be talking about Bridgeport Park tonight.
I don't think there's anything on the agenda, is there?
Something about a grant?
Yeah, my understanding is that you have chatted amongst yourself maybe and decided to come to ask about it because we did pass it the last, we did pass a, a lease negotiation in the last meeting, so. Yeah, but we, we can, we're, we're moving through. I think we have one or two more things and we can certainly talk about in open, in open forum and, no, I'm sorry, in public comment, we can certainly get to. Let me just check there. Yeah.
I mean, at this point, we've gotten a lot of feedback. I appreciate your time. We are going to take a look, you know, exactly what we have out there, what Mr. Mazatelli can do at this point. He does have, not to belabor anything, he does have an area where he loads off of Ford Street, where he can have employees parked there. So it kind of acts as a dual purpose. If, you know, a truck's coming, he can have them temporarily move so that the loading and unloading can take place and then the cars can park back. So I think it's a good dual use, kind of a shared parking that I'm sure the borough in a lot of cases looks for to help reduce the overall burden on the parking. But like I said, we'll go back. Thank you again for all the feedback, all the information, all your concerns, questions. We'll go back, take another look at it, see what we can do and hopefully be back and present something in the near future.
Winky, the best of luck. And anything to do with the formality of that parking agreement, I think would be very helpful just in terms of, even if it's not formalized, just being able to state it, I think would be very helpful in our decision making. But best of luck.
All right. Thank you.
Is Joe Clement still involved in this transaction as your attorney? No, Joe's not the license. Joe, Joe was the real estate. The other gentleman was the license. If he, I spoke to him earlier today. If, if he's staying involved, ask him to give me a call.
I will, I will. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Luigi.
Next up for council consideration, authorization of bills and salaries for the month of May 2024.
So moved.
Second. First, the motion from Mr. Shank, a second from Ms. Gudrim. Any comments or, any comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mayor, would you be okay if we move public comment up so that we can get the kids home?
Go for it.
Thank you so much. All righty. We will move our agenda around to make it where our public comment, which is item I, so anyone that would like to speak publicly is welcome to do so at the podium. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Mike Sobko, 723 Beach Court. I just wanted to talk about the park. I've been the PTC at Bridgeport Elementary School for five years, president for three. And one thing that, you know, I heard recently, or not, not that recently, is that when the kids go up to the school, I'm sorry, up to the playground, they're not allowed on the playground. They can go on the track, they can go on the sports fields, but they're not allowed on the playground for reasons like broken slides and rusty equipment and things like that. And, you know, that's not, that's not the greatest look for our community, right? So I think something needs to be done about the park itself. Another thing I'll say is being on the, the calls with the superintendents and the school district, we are kind of viewed as the redheaded stepchild, I'm sorry for any redheads, of, of Upper Marion School District. And it's for reasons like this, where we don't have a park that we can send our kids to, that they're allowed to go on, that's public, right? It doesn't happen at Kaylee, it doesn't happen at Roberts, it doesn't happen at the other schools, but it does at ours, where they can't go on the playground for safety reasons. So I'm just asking if there's something that can be done about our park itself. Not the park. The park is great, the fields are great, but the actual playground is, like, nobody wants to play on it, right?
Thank you, Mike. I mean, it sounded like it was a related topic. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this topic before we give our remarks? Yeah, I'm trying to make sure I give everyone a chance before we answer the question. Seems like, I mean, I recognize a lot of you from the schools, just assuming.
Hi, Laura Gamble, 441 Depot Street. I think a number of us, maybe you can stand if you came for that purpose of talking about playgrounds. Kind of, it, it's been an issue for a while there and it just continues to be a problem. And I have been remiss in bringing it up previously. So I'm just wondering what we are actively looking at to resolve it and bring it to safety and just to accommodate something more recent. I know it's an expensive endeavor, but what has been done or what can be done? Because I understand it's not totally owned by Bridgeport, so.
Thank you. No comments on the topic?
Dana Thompson, 416 Coats. I'll go a little further and I say the state of the park is unacceptable. There's a bank of eight swings. I have never seen more than three that are intact and working. On the main piece of equipment, there are three slides. Two of them are broken. One was removed. The other one just sits there with some wood planks nailed up against it so that kids don't go down it. I don't know if you've ever been to the park on a beautiful summer day. It's deserted because it's a terrible park. I text my friends and I say, yeah, that park is a joke. This, whoever runs that park should be fired. It's a disaster. It's an embarrassment to our community and anything that stands in the way of improving the park needs to go.
Thank you for your comment. Any additional comments?
Christina Mannan, 2, 242 Hur Street. Just moved, that's why I don't know. 242 Hur Street. I think we can establish that, like, the park is not up to any one's standards with children that, you know, want them to have somewhere that they can play safely and enjoy. I think that's been established. What hasn't been yet is what, like, you're doing as a council to get it up to a standard. Like, I know there are, like, tons of grants and different programs out there that are available, like, to assist you in doing that. So like, who's researching that? And what, what process? Like, where are we in the process of getting this? There's so much revitalization. So there's going to be like a ton of new kids and there's all this business. And like, this is a great community, so it should have an inviting and warm space for its children. So I think the goal, what we really want to know is where are we in the process of getting that rectified? Because there's no reason for us to have all of this development and that not be a top priority.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Great. Any members of council or the mayor like to speak about the topic? If you wouldn't, that's okay. I just want to ask and give the opportunity to do so.
I, I thank you everybody for coming out and voicing that we, I think we needed to hear it. And by we, I mean everybody that's going to be watching this, the whole community, because this will be recorded and streamed and I'm glad we're going to have the conversation. I'll let those with more knowledge and depth address the questions, but thanks for coming out.
If it's okay with council, I'd like to share my thoughts about the topic. I'd like to start by saying that this council is really dedicated to this community in a way that I've never seen in other municipalities. We work day in and day out to make sure that these things are brought to light and that they're taken care of. I'd like to give an example of this. Earlier this year, we established missions, a mission statement and core values. To me, that's not something that's on the wall that people memorize for, for someone to come ask about. It's not BS. It's not something that we aren't taking seriously. I'd like to read the mission statement. Our mission statement is to foster a vibrant and inclusive community where residents feel connected, supported and empowered to thrive while embracing sustainable growth, celebrating our heritage and striving for a high quality of life for all, which this park does not do for us. I hope everyone can agree that. Our core values are community engagement, transparency and accountability, stewardship and sustainability, innovation and adaptation, safety and security. I'd like to touch on transparency and accountability. We need to be held accountable. I really appreciate you taking your time and the little kids' time out of your Tuesday night, but this is very important. It's very important to hear what you would like for us to do and what your concerns are, and we take them very seriously. Now, in the, in the space of transparency, I'd like to, I'd like to introduce you to my process and what I've done and what this council has done since January. We have open communications with the park board. We do not own the majority of the park, or we don't own all of the park. We don't own the park itself, the equipment itself that we are currently discussing. We do own other portions of the park. The relationship has been strained. It is our full intention till this day and even beyond this conversation to build a trusting relationship and an effective relationship with the park board. Now, I had never met the park board before, my interactions as, you know, a council member, and I don't actually know who they are personally or don't have a relationship. So I feel we have a good, a good chance to build this relationship together. To show the good faith, I'd like to state what council does for the park board. We mow the lawn. We pay them $25,000 a year? $25,000 a year for operating costs, which I actually don't think is enough. I would like to increase that amount if we have a good relationship and something that actually makes sense. My intention is to fully help fund and make that as vibrant as possible. We also carry the insurance for the park, believe it or not. So we can't control the park, but if something happens on that park, the borough, your tax dollars are responsible for paying that. That means your insurance premiums will go up and your taxes will have to increase to cover that, potentially, right? So I just want everyone to understand the gravity of the situation. Understanding this, understanding our mission statement, I went out and the council went out and we started conversations. To show good faith, we went out of our way and spent tax dollars to have conversations and to reach out to our contacts to secure funding. Now, we, we discussed with our engineers and we have decided that $200,000 to $300,000 is an appropriate amount and a grant that we can actually receive. We got an opportunity to apply for a grant. It was sponsored and supported by our local representatives, our state senators and potentially our state reps as well. So we've done everything that we can do as a council to move this conversation along. Now, Mr. Bello has fantastically been helping us through this entire process and someone that I, you know, would not go through this process without, has done a great job in fostering this relationship and had reached out to them in the last meeting, as you can all go back and watch, to begin negotiations for a lease. In order to secure state funding, we are required to have teeth in the game. We have to get a lease for the park. We cannot use state dollars to give a random nonprofit money to build something that's not legal within the bounds of this grant that we are applying for. So we asked them to give us a lease. We asked them to give us their terms. And to be honest, they sent back terms that were basically a gag order for this entire council against our policies, completely disrespectful and not appropriate for any of us to do. I would like to, just give me a nod. Do you think that it's appropriate for elected officials that you elected sitting up here to be quiet about anything that we do? Do you think it's appropriate for me to not announce to the public that we use their tax dollars to secure a grant through our engineers upwards of a couple of thousand dollars and use the time of our, of our manager and our solicitor to do this? I don't think that's appropriate. So I did not sign the gag order and you can blame me for that if you'd like to, but I felt that it was inappropriate to have elected officials be silenced by an entity that isn't even related to the borough. So I, I still fully intend on pursuing this relationship. I think it's very important. There are other grants we are able to get. I want to announce that they have rejected our proposal and they have rejected our lease agreement and they do not want to do further business with us. So the park board, as of today, does not want to interact with us, does not want to sign anything that relates to giving us a lease. Completely understandable. I can respect that, but what I can't do is be quiet. So I, yeah, if you'd like, yes, you sure can.
So this park board, I understand is, is not part of.
I need your name.
Christina Mannan, 242.
Okay.
Got you. So is there, is there a way to, to get rid of them? Like, I'm just, I'm like, I'm just very confused as to why we have this entity, this organization that is not part of our borough, like, in charge of our park.
They're a nonprofit. They function on their own. So I.
Like, so who grants their license?
So I propose the following, if you would allow.
Yeah.
Mr. Roger, have you done a survey of, to see if the park is up to code by any chance in the last couple of years?
I haven't looked at it on a code basis, but.
If you wouldn't mind spending.
Familiar with the condition of the equipment, yeah.
If you would, if you would have some time in the next two weeks, if you, before our next meeting, I would love someone from your organization to go down and just give us a, a formal report of where the park is at, if that's okay. I also, if you would just, wouldn't mind. The park, we fund the park as of right now. They don't do their due diligence as a nonprofit to get other sources of income, which we plan on increasing if we have a good relationship. I fully and again want to state that I intend on collaborating. So our insurance being tied to them, depending on the report that Mr. Roger comes back with, I think that that's some negligence on our part for not sharing this with our insurance company. So I think that that needs to be very clear. And in addition, there's, we're working on some nonprofit applications where the borough now has transparency into the funding and into the operations. And everyone, anyone in the borough or beyond that would like to interact with us from a nonprofit perspective will need to go through a legal official application process that's reasonable and we will help anyone that would like to go through this process as well.
Got you. I just, I wonder if we're looking at this organization from all angles for our benefit, for the benefit of the community as opposed to the benefit of the organization. Like you just said, like, when was the last time it was, it was evaluated?
I.
I'm sure, like, there are so many things at that, that park that are not acceptable that, like, I'm looking at and I don't, like, that's not code.
We agree. We can't.
Like, if they're not talking, if they're not, if they're not willing to, you know, meet you halfway, then I'm, I'm sure there are other, like, there are other ways.
So what I encourage you to do, we are doing everything in our possible power to do what we need to do. Ultimately, it's your job to complain to the state, to the county and to the school board and you can, that's, this is really for you to do. This is the public's, the public's responsibility at this point because they're a nonprofit. We will also do everything in our power to make sure that this is rectified and that the park is up to code.
Yeah. So I, 100%, I am here because, like, we also have a responsibility to our community. But the thing is, we don't know that. We don't know what, what needs to be done. We don't know who it's a call. So like, you have a whole page, like, you send out memos, you have, so like, there are ways for you to communicate to us as community members of what's needed.
We were attempting to, to mend the relationship amicably so that we didn't have to get to this point. That we were really trying our best and I, I mean, Mr. Bello can attest that I took both of my children, my raging two-year-old and my six-year-old that was trying to contain him to a meeting in a, in a lawyer's office and ran around like a chicken with my head cut off to make sure that these meetings happened and were happening. I am working tirelessly.
Completely applaud your efforts. I am not, not.
No, and I appreciate you. I just want to give.
I'm just saying you were diplomatic about it, but it doesn't seem that they are. So let's figure out how we bring them to the table to get what needs to be done for our community.
I, I agree with you. Thank you for your comments.
And be aware, even though we don't have members of the park board here this evening, these meetings are recorded. They're out there. These comments will be heard, I'm sure.
Dana Thompson, 416 Coats. Why does the borough pay to have the lawn mowed and pay for the insurance if the borough does not have any? does not have any control over what happens at the park?
We're asking the same questions, and the intention is to support something that's very important to the borough. The park is very important to the borough, is very important to its residents. I live a block away and attend more than once a week. I see little Miss Savannah there all the time, and her and my daughter are best friends and they hang out there dangerously. So I agree and I understand, and I think that we were trying to build the relationship because if we could have mended it and we could have gotten it rectified, then I would rather have done that.
I mean, if this nonprofit can't function without the borough paying its bills, then maybe the borough should stop paying its bills. If they're not going to be nice, play hardball.
All these ideas have occurred to everyone, believe it or not, but I...
What do I need to do as a community member? Make me a list!
Let me answer your question. The borough has historically, over, I think, 100 years, has paid to have the grass cut and paid a stipend and paid different insurance because they don't own the real estate and it provides a park to our citizens. So while things have become adversarial over recent times, it worked for 95 years, 90 years. So in answer to your question, all these things are being considered, but understand that the fund owns the park and has owned the park. The borough never owned the park, ever. It was left in trust for the benefit of the community for park, and it's run by their board, okay?
How do we get in contact with their board? I don't, like, they don't, do they have a website? Do we...
They have a Facebook page.
They have a Facebook page evidently, but I'm sure Mr. Schrumen can give you contact information if you need it. But you answered, your question's a good question, but that's the answer.
I'm not like a local government person, so I don't know what I need to do as a citizen...
Fair question, it's one of the issues we're facing, right?
It's an unusual relationship, to be honest with you, but we're Bridgeport too, right? So we, we're .8 square miles. We can't, we can't find another Bridgeport Park.
Right.
Right, it's the only one. It's non-fungible. So, and it worked. It worked for 90 years, right? So there was no, there was no reason to fix anything until it fell apart. It has fallen apart, but it did work for 90 years. So there's a good track record as to what the borough did for all those years. It's not working right now. Everything you talked about is being considered because it is not working now, but it did work for 90 years. It wasn't a coincidence that it worked for 90 years. It worked well for 90 years and it benefited this community for 90 years. And I'm using the number 90, I think it's actually longer than that, but you got my point.
I've lived in, I've been a homeowner in Bridgeport for 12 years, which means, which means I don't belong here because my grandparents weren't born here. I'm sure you've all come up against that attitude in Bridgeport.
I think that's a dying attitude, but I'm sure it exists on some level.
And I don't care what was done 100 years ago, I don't care if it worked for 90 years, I care that it doesn't work now.
You should care because you asked the question. I'm just answering your question. Whether you care about the answer or not, that's for you to decide. I answered the question you asked.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
And I would just add one thing to the gentleman in the back, that yes, when, and maybe you can pass this message along because this is something this council has not talked about recently. When the school was built, they were, they needed Bridgeport Park as part of their amenity to get approved by the state of Pennsylvania. If my calculation is correct, they've donated exactly, donated exactly $0 to that playground in, how long has that school been there? 20 years. $0.
That's not their responsibility.
No, it is. It is under the relationship, it is. I wish, I wish, I wish to say it wasn't, but they are obligated to fix the parking lot and they are obligated to participate in that playground. They're not the problem, but they've gotten a pass on, the Upper Marion School District's gotten a pass for all these years, and, you know, their day's going to come too.
Mike Salko, 723 Beach Court, sorry, I'm back again. I agree with you, I think that's why I'm saying we're the redheaded stepchild of Upper Marion School District, right? Because we're not part of Upper Marion or King of Prussia, so if you're saying they should pay for that, they probably should, but how does that work when we're not really part of... My taxes get stopped every year because I'm paying taxes to Norristown and I'm paying...
We're not paying to Norristown, we're part of Upper Marion School District, Bridgeport and West Clenchahockin. So we are part of that. And look, I don't think anybody purposely said, "Don't pay for the playground over 20 years," but they haven't.
That's what you said.
But they have it.
I know.
They have it.
I understand.
And they, and they use our parking lot every single day. And they've paid exactly zero for that parking lot.
It's our kids in this community that are suffering from it, not Upper Marion.
That's right, and that's why Upper Marion School Board should be making a significant contribution.
They should.
And if I have my daughters, they're going to.
Okay, but they're not, and now we're suffering from that, right? That's fair.
Well, it's not, no, we're not, I would not put all the blame on them. I'm saying they got a 20-year pass, and that's enough.
A 20-year pass is a lot of blame.
That's, that's a lot of responsibility they've ignored.
And in some ways, I don't want to belabor the point too much, but that's, in a lot of ways, a separate issue than the things that all the people here are bringing...
It is a separate issue.
Yeah, it's not exactly tied into all the things we've been talking about today. And I'd like to stick up for where Bridgeport stands in the Upper Marion School District because I was just at the concert and we had one of our Bridgeport students doing the conducting, and when I talked about the things that our children were doing with the Wax Museum and other things, people from other parts of Upper Marion were jealous of the things happening in Bridgeport. So lately, I've been finding people from other elementary schools jealous of Bridgeport Elementary, so I'm...
Well, you're welcome for that, because I'm the president of Bridgeport Elementary School, as you say. But it's not from you!
Mike, you do a great job, I appreciate it.
Have one of the people upstairs call me and explain to me why they've paid $0 towards their park that they put on their application to the state that they were going to use and allowed them to get approved.
I agree.
Ask them how they paid nothing.
That's a really weird conversation for me to have, right?
It's a separate, it's a separate...
I'm sorry, I'm not going to make that focal...
But when you say Bridgeport's a redheaded stepchild...
It is, though.
I'm kind of agreeing with you that they're treating us like that.
They are, and they are, and I agree. I promise I won't come back again.
Thank you for your comment, thank you for your... Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
One more time.
Mike.
I promise.
Mr. Michael Salko.
Thank you for everything you guys have done, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
If we want Upper Marion School District to contribute to Bridgeport Park, can they legally do that? Because it's owned by a nonprofit and not public land?
Yes, because when they made their application, when they made their application to the state of Pennsylvania to put the school there, they had to use Bridgeport Park. So they came to an agreement with the fund to be able to use that green space for the kids. And look, maybe the fund...
Was there an agreement with the fund to contribute?
Yes.
And so they're in violation?
Look, the fund has to ask them for money, there's no doubt about that, okay? What I'm saying to you, the gentleman said that Bridgeport was being mistreated, and I'm saying, there's some, there's some truth to that.
If you've looked at any other elementary school in Upper Marion, it's obvious. You don't even have to go inside.
Well, again, I'm not pointing the, I'm not suggesting that somebody made a conscious decision, that I'm sure it's, it's just didn't get thought about or discussed, but they use our park to meet the state of Pennsylvania regulations. They have to have play area. And we, the fund provides some of it and the borough provides some of it, because we don't own the top of the park.
But do we know what the nature of the, is there, is there an agreement between the fund and the school, other than when the school was built?
It dates back to then.
But is there like an ongoing obligation of some kind?
They've contributed some over the years, they've cut grass on certain occasions, they've improved baseball fields, but they've not given us a new parking lot and they've not given anything towards the playground. And when I hear people understandably say that the kids can't play there when they come from school, that annoys me, okay? Because the school uses that too, and they have paid nothing.
But the fund hasn't asked for it?
I don't know that. I don't know that.
Okay.
You look like you want to be right about something, and all I'm trying to do is give you information.
I'm just trying to figure out who all the players are. I know y'all aren't responsible for this, but something's got to change.
No, and we agree, and that's why, again, we've been putting our efforts in. Ford, we're going to conduct, if Mr. Phillips will conduct a survey for us, give us his report, and then I think we can move steps, but there are other entities that you can certainly complain to as well to make sure that this is heard and understood and just make sure that you continue to voice your opinions to us. We welcome them and thank you for spending your day, your night with us, we appreciate it. We are going to, if there's no further follow comment, move into another section, as with others, you're welcome to leave if you'd like to, or if you'd like to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do so.
Good night, folks.
Thanks for coming out.
Moving on to unfinished business, are there any items of unfinished business to discuss this evening? Moving on to committee reports, do we have any committee reports to share?
I would just like to mention that the Halloween committee will be meeting on June 4th, my birthday. I probably will bring cake, so if you'd like to come, you're welcome to come.
All right, seeing no further committee reports, we can move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Jack Seere.
Well, thank you. Just please remember that this Thursday, May 30th, I'm inviting everyone to join me at the Fire Company's bingo event beginning at 6:45 PM at Bridgeport Fire Company Number One to help celebrate my birthday. President Alzada and I have very close birthdays, so it's a birthday-filled week. So I'm very excited to be celebrating a fun day while also supporting our fire department, so please join in the fun. And I wish everyone stayed for this because it's exciting and involves them. I just want to remind everyone that our family fun night in collaboration with the Norristown Library will be happening here at Borough Hall on Friday, June 14th at 6:30 PM. This free event is for all ages and we'll be having some tasty food while playing some games as a community. And this is an exciting way to ring in the summer, so please swing by for some free dinner and family fun. So if you have any questions about either of these events or anything else, you're welcome to reach out to me to learn more. And finally, I just want to note that Saturday somehow is June, which is also Pride Month. So I'll be hanging my pride flag up in my office window for everyone to see for the whole month, so please feel free to swing by to view that if you choose. You can see it on the outside of the building, so if you're here on off hours, you can still see it. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor. Moving on to new business, do we have any new business to discuss this evening?
I have one item, really quickly. So I wanted to introduce a new idea for an ordinance. It'll be called Bridge Art. So the idea here is that we have a lot of development, as we know, in town. Bridgeport has countless projects coming in, we saw one presented today, and I do think that, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of good intentions when it comes to new development and new businesses coming into town and building, but I think it would be nice to have kind of a formal, a formal ordinance to make sure that we have the right partners coming into town and these towns, and that these partners are committed to giving back to Bridgeport. The way that I'd like to do that is to mandate a 1% of each budget above $100,000, and we can certainly discuss these numbers, and I welcome a discussion from council, but the idea is that if there's a large project coming into town, they would have to dedicate 1% of their budget to art, whether that is on their building itself, through a mural or some kind of fun display, or a cool bench, or whatever it might be, like, we're open to those ideas, but the, or to, they could donate it to a fund that's dedicated to art and improvement projects within the borough itself. We can certainly do a couple of different variations where council is in control of, you know, agreeing to those art projects, or if we decide to have kind of a subcommittee or committee, do that, also open to that. So the process itself, I'm open to discussing, but I do think that time is of the essence. I think we have a lot of proposals coming in the next couple of months, and there's only so much land in Bridgeport, so this is, this will be a really, a missed opportunity if we wait too long to kind of pass something like this, because I think that the new projects coming in are going to be here for a long period of time, so we will lose out on kind of having the right partners in the right places giving back to our community. So with that, I provided, Mr. Roger, I've provided you with a document, if you'd like to just take a look and review, you can let us know. But I do think that I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts about this, even, I know it's a little bit late, so I appreciate your patience.
I have a couple of, I'm sorry, I have just a couple of quick questions, I reviewed this quickly. First of all, the title's called Bridge Art. Bridgeport, I think, only owns one bridge and you don't want any more, so maybe if you want...
Totally open to shutting up the channel.
Look, just so it doesn't sound like you're going to paint something on every bridge because they got yours. And I guess the other question I have is, it appears to apply also to borough public works projects or just outside investment projects?
I think it's in general, so even landlords that have above $100,000, so any, everyone would be included except for owners of homes that will be residing in those homes.
The question I had was more if the borough replaces their wastewater pumping station...
I'm sorry, misunderstood, not the borough.
Okay.
Because we would be in charge of and helping fund some of these things.
But it wouldn't apply to borough projects?
No, it would not. Thank you for the question.
I remember, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, I did propose an art project of some sort where we would have like $5,000 in grants, and it was obviously a lot less in terms of funds, and it would be towards local artists to create art projects in Bridgeport. And I wonder how, if we wanted to do this, if people would give that money towards a fund, like you're saying. I think it's a great idea, I appreciate your putting that forth. So, and as I see Dr. Ray here, it makes me think, which I didn't when you proposed this online, if that fund could be the mandatory money and then also voluntary money if anyone wants to contribute to projects, that would be, because I think a lot of businesses would want to contribute to things, and we'd have to figure out how that gets disseminated. So I want to see the formal end of it, I hope that we can make that work because we need to find the locations, where it makes sense, what kind of art, et cetera, but I would like to move in that direction to make it happen, I think it would be very good.
I would love to see any, like, case studies where this has been done and how successful it has been and what the effects have been, I think that'd be great to share with...
That's a great point. So it is active in Philadelphia and in Pittsburgh for years, and it's the reason that Philadelphia has the most number of murals in the country. So it's very effective, it's very active, and they do a lot of different variations with it, and there is a fund that they kind of pick projects and go for it, and that's why they're, it's pretty down there from that perspective.
Yeah, I know the mural fund in Philly has been thriving, there's murals everywhere and they love them.
All the 1% art project, so it's bigger than the murals, I'm just saying...
Oh, I thought there was the, there is a nonprofit that does murals as well, so, okay, it's unrelated, I didn't realize. But I think it's great, I just, to illustrate to people why we're doing this, I think it'd be great to, like, actually show pictures of what's been done and things like that.
100%.
One thing that I, that occurred to me is I thought about it, so we've been going through a couple of years now, strategic planning, long-range planning with the County Planning Commission, and during those conversations, we've identified the commercial corridor and opportunities for public beautification, what we can do particularly at the portals coming into the borough. We've got, what, four or five entrances that come into town? You know, my thought would be is we identify opportunities to beautify those areas where we have talked about the necessity of upgrading and how those can, you know, be of a benefit to the entire community. You know, maybe we look at a program like this where we take whatever that percentage or whatever that revenue that we take, we put into a fund of some sort, as Mr. Ohio mentioned, but then we target those specific corridors, intersections, projects that we have already identified as being areas where we would get the most bang for the buck in improving and beautifying, you know, rather than, you know, somebody improves a duplex improves a duplex on Hurst Street and they say, "Hey, I'm gonna spend $1,000, I'm gonna put a marble statue out front of Cupid." Well, great, but what is that, you know, what does that do for your block or your neighbors? I don't know, I don't know that the neighbors would love it. It's art, and what's art? Art's subjective, that's a conversation for the ages, but we know that we've identified corridors, areas, projects that we think would be of benefit and in alignment with our long-term plan. So how can we take this idea and sort of dovetail that with the longer-term strategic plan that we've already been discussing for the last couple of years? So, you know, that's my input. My other input would be is, can we include trees? They're not art, but we talk all the time about needing tree cover in town.
I like the idea of generalizing to beautification.
Making beautification, yeah.
So I, I do agree with you there. I think that's a great idea. Do you have any other thoughts?
I have one comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would probably ask council to consider having the community board make the decision. And the reason I say that is, I think the board, the community board was used in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia because of the sheer size of the city and the number of issues that's presented to them at every meeting. You are elected officials, the accountability stops with you.
I mean, making it that we --
Yeah, yeah, because, oh, you did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, no, if, if, if council's agreed, that's fine.
I, I, yeah, I think that's been the --
My, I just kind of gave it a first stab, but Kyle --
You confuse, you confuse this with community board after we're discussing 14 other entities, I think, yeah.
I was like, who's the community board? In my mind, but, yeah.
As a general proposition, I, you know, community members, their hearts are in the right place, but everybody brings their own biases, but there's no accountability for the community board members. You guys are subject to election, so you're making hard decisions, and if you're making bad hard decisions, voters can vote, right? So I, I tend to like the responsibility to stay with council because, A, I think they're more engaged, and they're gonna do the research and put the time in, and also, you know, your, your decisions are subject to the election where other people, you know, just give an opinion, and, and that can be a problem sometimes.
Thank you for that.
A value.
And again, if we've spent a couple of years already working on a strategic vision for things, how can we take this idea, which, you know, we've talked about, you know, beautification in town for years, we, you know, worked with the Sustainability Committee for a while, and Mr. Howe brought up his ideas, you know, but there was never a push to really oomph it, and if we do that now, can we dovetail that in with the strategic work that we've been doing? Again, identifying where we think there'll be, and we'll get the most value for the, the spend on the beautification projects, but...
Yeah, thank you for all, for your strategic thinking. I think this has kind of brought it to where I think it's functional and useful to Bridgeport and applicable very quickly, I think, if we manage this. So my takeaway from this is I'll go home tonight and tomorrow and rework this to make it make sense and apply the edits that we just chatted about. If anyone else has any thoughts, email me, feel free to let me know, or even if the public has some thoughts, I'd be more than happy in welcoming to them. Roger, if you're --
You know, we should clarify. Sorry to interrupt you, but I know one point that's gonna immediately come up in everybody's minds is the project this applies to, and I don't think you mentioned it. If it's work on your primary residence, if you're a homeowner and you're putting $100,000 roof on your house, that's not --
Does not apply at all.
Yeah, under this umbrella. It's more commercial.
The idea is to have, you know, no, the idea is to have investors that are coming to take from the community and benefit from it, to give back to it in a permanent way. So you don't get to just come to Bridgeport and develop and make a million dollars and leave. What you do is you leave something behind for the Bridgeport residents, and that's really where the inspiration is for me. But thank you, Kyle. I think that is a good point. Don't worry about you having to personally donate to us. Go ahead.
When you're done your draft, if you can send it over to me, just to confine it, and I would ask, too, that maybe not for tonight, but something council should consider going forward is, how long does someone have to keep a mural on their house, for example? Right? If, if, if they, if they do that, yeah, who's maintaining it, and if it goes into disrepair, can they paint over it, and what duration, those types of things?
I think then the, in the examples that I saw online for other cities, it seemed that the fund took care of it, so whatever the fund was, they kind of took the responsibility, but we, I'm certainly open to discussion. I think that's a great point. And I think, so once I draft my draft, I will send it over to everyone, including Mr. Bell, your office, Mr. Phillips, your office as well. If we could do about a two-week turnaround time, if that's reasonable. If not, please let me know, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to adjust, but I just do think time's of the essence, especially with a couple of projects that are coming down the line.
And I hate to, I hate to dovetail on something Mr. Bell said too positively, because I think he gets plenty of good feedback already, but your point about the, the mural and, you know, how long that may stay on the side of the house, again, if we, if those sort of things are already a part of the work that we've done identifying areas and projects, then that, that conversation's probably already been had, you know? If we're gonna do something at this intersection, we know that we already have worked with Keith and Public Works is going to be able to manage, or we know who's already, that